Good evening. Welcome one, welcome all, to our formal session. At this point, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And if we could please rise for the invocation and the pledge. Heavenly Father, you are always with us and beside us. Be with us this evening as we consider the affairs of our great city. Give us the patience to listen, the wisdom to decide, and the strength to act. Amen. And if we may now have a moment of silence for all those men and women who paid the ultimate price to keep our nation and city safe. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Thank you all. Okay, at this point, Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present.
All are present. At this point, could I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second. Okay, the vote is open.
One second, please. The vote is open. Vice Mayor, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you've certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Okay, and at this point, could I have a motion to certify the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of August 8, 2023?
So moved.
The vote is open. Vice Mayor, may I have your vote, please?
Okay, and thank you at this point.
I'm sorry. By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the minutes as submitted.
My apologies, Madam Clerk. At this point, we have the annual honor of welcoming King Neptune and the Court to our city's council chambers and welcome for the first time in our new chambers. Kit Chop, would you kindly come up and say hello to us?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's great to be back with you again. Hold on, let me put on my reading glasses. I'm here to present the 49th Court of King Neptune, an annual tradition, and we enjoy very much coming down to see you all. As the city's official celebration, we have been producing accessible and welcoming events to celebrate the beach life since 1974. As you all know, our mission is to provide quality, safe, and diverse events and activities that enhance family values and togetherness, create a positive economic impact, and showcase the unique location of Virginia Beach as a city by the sea. Personally, on behalf of our board and our staff, I want to thank each one of you all and city staff for everything you do for us year after year after year. Obviously, we are dependent upon you for your support in so many different ways, and we find that that is an unwavering source of commitment. We appreciate that. We value that strong relationship with members of council, with the numerous city departments with whom we work, and of course, the countless professional staff members. You are all incredible to work with, and we could not do what we do without you in addition to producing the 40 annual events like the Symphony by the Sea Concert Series this Thursday night. Mr. Mayor, I think you're going to be there Thursday evening, which is wonderful. And I think Councilmember Taylor, I think I saw your name on the list for Thursday, which would be wonderful. Our Seniors Gala is coming up in a couple of weeks. Our craft beer and fall wine festivals are coming up. And of course, Boardwalk Weekend, our grand parade, our 8K run, our art and craft show, our International Sand Sculpting Championship, where we'll have 32 sculptors from 13 different countries from around the globe create some very unique works of art. And as I told you last time I appeared before, you were here working with numerous city departments, including communications and the public safety agencies, to find ways to celebrate the city's 60th anniversary. So with that, I am honored to present to you the 49th Royal Court of King Neptune, representing seven high schools across our city. Princess Megan Allman, Princess Anna Lee Barton, Princess Carrie Boone, Princess Sana Shandramani, Princess Kate Dixon, Princess Madeline Hobbs, Princess Kaya Jackson, Princess Lacey Macon, Princess Katie Sager, Princess Reese Thompson, and Princess Marissa Williams. Unable to be with us this evening are Princesses Emerson Eves and Jordan Shelby. And now the Tritons and their partners, Triton Gina Amick and Gentleman Johnny Amick. Triton Greg Amaroso and Lady Alana Amaroso. Triton Dan Barton and Lady Jennifer Barton. All right, here's the one with the logistics. Triton Michael Berlucci and Gentleman Cole Workheiser. Triton George Fates and Lady Kristen Fates. Triton Chris Pearson and Lady Alyssa Pearson. Triton Jesse Wykel and Lady Ashley Wykel. Unable to be with us this evening are Triton Skyler Thomas and Lady Chelsea Thomas. I'll wait for Michael to get down here, and then I'll introduce our celebration chairs for this year. Our Mr. and Mrs. Steve and Stephanie Sager, and Mr. Mayor, King Neptune the 49th, Bill Laskera and his wife, Lady Laura.
Welcome, King. If you could kindly give us a few words. Thank you, and welcome all of you.
Thank you for the opportunity to join you this evening. I will tell you that I've been a Virginia Beach resident most of my life. My father was in the Navy, so we moved up and down the coast a bit, but Virginia Beach has always been home. I was surprised in 2012 when I was invited by Queen Mother, as we call her, Nancy Creach, to dinner, and I was advised that I was being considered as a Triton in the court of 2012 of the Neptune Festival. And my understanding of the Neptune Festival was the Boardwalk Weekend at the end of September and a couple of days of fun. It turns out I learned a great deal about the Neptune Festival, the city's involvement in it and support of it. And doggone if we didn't go all the way from March through the end of September and celebrating life at the beach, supporting various other organizations. We had a great time. I was fortunate enough to become the Celebration Chairman and get on the Board of Directors and see how much the city supports. And really, it's a very win-win situation. I think that the King Neptune and the celebration of the Neptune Festival does a great deal to bring in people to the city. Our city council and the government supports the program, and it's been going on now for 49 years, always in success. So it's a win-win because it's a great way to meet people and at the same time, give back to the community. So I want to thank, on behalf of the Neptune Festival and my court, all that the city council does for the Neptune Festival, and we look forward to continuing in the future.
And thank you and congratulations to everyone. The Neptune Festival is indeed a point of pride for the city of Virginia Beach and helps define us as a community. Thank you. God bless all of you. Appreciate it. And now, I believe we're about to honor a Boy Scout who is among us. One of the Futures of America. What's your name and what troop are you from?
Peter Colucci, Troop 63.
Great, great. And thank you for belonging to a magnificent organization. And thanks to the parents and all the Scoutmasters that help out. We want to welcome you. And on behalf of the city, I'd like to give you a city pin. Come on up. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to have some speakers tonight, so I will read the speaker's policy. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. So are we ready for the consent agenda?
I'm sorry. We had someone sign up for an item that was on consent agenda, J-11. Would you like to go ahead and have that speaker come forward?
Okay, yeah, let's do that.
Gary McCollum. Mr. McCollum, this is on J-11.
Thank you. I will be very brief.
Oh, welcome.
Thank you. I want to applaud Councilman Berlucci for your efforts in bringing that issue to the table. I think it speaks to how we value diversity within our community. I'd be remiss if I did not say while I celebrate Neptune, I just share with the leadership that the lack of diversity, because I didn't see one African-American person there, that's not who we are. But Councilman Berlucci, I am for this. I applaud you for bringing this issue to the table, and I'm in full support of it.
Thank you very much, Gary. Thanks for coming forward. Okay.
Are we ready now?
Yep.
Under ordinances and resolutions, number five is the ordinance to accept temporary encroachments into a portion of city-owned property known as Treasure Canal and city-owned five-foot drainage utility easement at the rear of 2241 Leeward Shore Court, where I construct and maintain a floating dock, timber pier, riprap, and boat lift, District 8. Number seven is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $322,968 from the Virginia Department of Social Service to the FY 2023-24 Human Services Operating Budget, where Medicaid redetermination efforts. Number eight is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $190,000 from the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health to the FY 2023-24 Fire Department Emergency Medical Services Operating Budget, where I implement on aging-in-place pilot program. Number nine is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $59,364 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to the FY 2023-24 Human Services Operating Budget and transfer $122,513 from the General Fund to provide the required local match, where I community corrections and pre-trial services programs. Number 10 is the ordinance to transfer $996,254 from CIP Project 10589, Central Utility Plant Enhancements, to CIP Project 10590, Courts Building Direct Digital Control, where the estimated labor cost increased. Number 11 is the ordinance to transfer one position and associated funding from the municipal council into the office of the city manager, where I provide staff support for the Independence District Review Board.
I open a public hearing on planning.
Number one is the city of Virginia Beach for a street closure, where I appropriating 20,332 square feet of New York Avenue between South First Colonial Road and Oceana Boulevard in District 6. Number two is Alexander Page and Pope Trust dated October 30, 2017, for a change of nonconformity, where I modify a principal dwelling at 4205 and 4207 Atlantic Avenue, and that's in District 6. Number three is Winters Properties LLC for a modification of proffers to a conditional use permit, where motor vehicle sales and service at 5200 Virginia Beach Boulevard, and that is in District 4. Number four is the First Class Event Rentals LLC, WE Sam's Properties LLC, for a conditional use permit, where I assemble use at 4020 Bonnie Rose Suite 101, District 4. Number five is the Milestone Tower Limited Partnership Paul S. Brown Family LLC for conditional use permit, where I communications tower for a portion of a parcel on the east side of Harper's Road and north of London Bridge Road in District 5. Number six, the Beal Browns LLC, Willis Realty Group, for a conditional use permit, where I tattoo parlor at 4224 Virginia Beach Boulevard, and that is in District 8. Number eight, this is the Nicholas Giuliana for a conditional use permit, short-term rental at 505 20th Street, District 6. Number nine, excuse me, that is going to be recommended for deferral until September 19. And number nine is going to be recommended for deferral until July, I mean, September 19. The Jamie George for a conditional use permit, where I short-term rental at 507 20th Street, 20th and a half Street, District 6. Move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the consent agenda, as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, we'll go back to the first ordinance, and that's to adopt a 2023 redistricting plan to authorize the implementation of a 10-10 single-member district system of local elections.
The first speaker is Rick Koalowicz, and then Henry Riddo.
Good evening.
Good evening, fellow citizens. The previous city council allowed the November 2022 election to take place knowing it was unlawful by violating the city charter. Every vote that this council has taken is void by law. The council must recuse themselves from this unlawful vote today. At the May 25 meeting with the city and the judge from the Allen Holloway case, the judge thought the current council was playing a PR game. If the election system was not changed, there's not going to be an election for 2024. My question is this: If there's not going to be an election in 2024, then explain to me how a lawful election was held in 2022. The ordinance to adopt a 2023 redistricting plan and to authorize implementation of the 10-district system tonight is a mission of an illegal election that was held in 2022. Furthermore, the Virginia Pilot reported a month ago, the General Assembly said there was not enough time to change the November 2022 election. The Attorney General told the voter registrar in a preclearance letter dated January 14, 2022, notwithstanding the court ruling, the city must follow all federal, state, and city ordinances. Clearly, that did not happen in 2022. The judge cannot usurp the legislative branch of government. Plenty of law in the books for that. The voter registrar warned the city of Virginia Beach that the charter was not being followed in 2022. There's more proof. Three current council members are collecting money in an at-large system that supposedly doesn't exist anymore. Or does it? Remember, the charter says you must resign your seat 10 days prior to running from an at-large district to a district system, or vice versa. The language is clear, and there was a violation of the law. The charter takes precedent over general state law. We are a deal-and-rule state. Everything must be in writing with approval from the general summary, with a 2/3 vote from the House and the Senate. The charter was not changed, a clear violation of the law. The city clearly misled the federal court. The past council violated the U.S. Constitution, Virginia Constitution, general law, the city charter, and a court order. I am not against the 10-1 district system. I have been campaigning for a district system for over 20 years, but it must be lawfully changed. The citizens of Virginia Beach must be allowed to pick the voting system they prefer. There must be a referendum. This group of 11 citizens unlawfully elected must recuse themselves from voting. You have no legal authority. This must be rectified immediately with a special election, and if not, it will cause irreparable harm to this city. Government officials are not exempt from following the law. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you, 11 citizens.
The next speaker is Henry Riddo, and then Dorothy Patterson.
My name is Henry Riddo. Once again, I come before you to urge retention of our 10-1 voting system and writing it into our city charter. Staff has suggested electoral change could simply be done by statute. That's technically possible, but not advisable. Enshrining it in our city charter would require a 2/3 vote of both chambers of the General Assembly later to delude it, which is implausible. The permanence of the much-needed reform would allow our great city to put the issue to rest. Last week, two speakers berched the subject of a referendum. Why that holds no water is that the rights of our protected classes under state and federal voting rights law cannot be nullified by the result of an advisory referendum. Voting down a district voting question no way impacts their legal rights. However, a putting the issue to referendum would create the perception among many that we can somehow dilute via referendum. The city's progress has been such stymied by a city government establishment that have failed to embrace inclusion. Largest obstacle always has been the glaring need for local electoral reform. For some of you, making a 10-1 system permanent may be as painful as passing a kidney stone. However, like a kidney stone, it's something we need to get through our system, and we will be much healthier after it's done. Coupled with additional reforms, our city government will be retooled to tackle the challenges we face moving through the 21st century. Be that as it may be, the 10-1 remains the biggest piece, the most important piece needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dorothy Patterson, and then Nanette Randall.
Good evening. I'd like to start by saying that our current city council is illegal and does not have the authority to make any decisions, much less vote on an ordinance related to our election system. I would also like to correct the record that the city is not adopting a redistricting plan. August 7, the Virginia Pilot stated the city is wanting to formally adopt a ward-based election system, not a redistricting plan. The ward-based election system is a whole new election system for the city. According to the teleconference on May 25 between the federal judge, the city, and Holloway's attorneys, Holloway's attorney stated the city is still under the 7-3 system, which is currently on the books as a matter of law. This means you cannot adopt this proposed redistricting plan. Also, at the May 25 Holloway case teleconference, the federal judge stated that if the election system is not changed, there is not going to be an election for the city in 2024. By making this statement, the judge recognizes that the election system has never, has not ever been changed to reflect the 10-1 system in the city charter. I would like for someone to explain to me then how we had a legal election in November 2022 when the city charter had not been changed. In addition, three districts did not duly elect people to represent them in November 2022. Wilson, Berlucci, and Wooton were anointed to their seats. With Virginia being a deal-and-rule state, all changes have to be written in the charter to be able to do it. Otherwise, all actions are void. A court order cannot usurp the law, and the court did not tell the city to break the law to implement the 10-1 system. The city charter is the ultimate law for the city to follow. The city immediately needs to authorize from the state to hold a special election under the 7-3-1 system, with seven districts being elected only by voters in their districts, since this is a system by law that we should be operating under in order to have a legal city council. Second, the city needs to go to the Virginia General Assembly and propose, with the proposed 10-1 election system, change to the Virginia Beach Charter. By doing so, the city can then implement the 10-1 election system for the 2024 election. Let me repeat: The current city council was unlawfully elected and must recuse themselves from voting on this ordinance. I am looking only for the laws to be followed by citizens and governing officials. Otherwise, we are a lawless society. Thank you.
The next speaker is Nanette Randall. After Ms. Randall is Gary McCollum.
Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I stand here tonight as a citizen who has dedicated hours of personal time over the past two years trying to learn more about election practices, both good and bad systems, and how elections these days are fraught with suspicion, corruption, fraud, and opaqueness. I never dreamed that holding sacred the vote in the election process, a process that I've enjoyed for over 50 years, would be so filled with confusion, complexity, and chaos. Today, many Americans do not trust our leaders to make the best decisions regarding elections. This is a sobering and sad fact. You are our leaders here, and we have an expectation that you will do your due diligence 100% of the time to ensure that we, the people, are protected from bias, cheating, and wrongdoing. Only legal votes must be counted. Since March of 2022, I have attended almost all of the Electoral Board meetings. Unfortunately, I have not garnered much knowledge about elections through these meetings, attributing it to my inability to grasp exactly why elections have turned into a ridiculously complicated process. Reasons for complexity and election mistrust have to do with things like lax voter ID, messy voter rolls, ads that push people to forget about their sacred voting day, and instead encourage us to vote early and by mail. Lastly, using corporate counting machines that might be certified or not, and denying analysts access to easy-to-read data and reports, non-PII, of course, because of excessive cost or stubborn secrecy, so that those who might easily inspect outcomes and results cannot. That is why I was intrigued to hear about the 10-1 district pending lawsuit. I concur that since the legislature writes the charter, they are the only body that can change the charter. The 7-3-1 system cannot be undone by the judiciary under any circumstances. But since that happened, albeit illegally, it seems that the 2022 election should be void. I recommend that this council fix the 2022 unlawful election by holding a special election with a referendum that allows Virginia Beach citizens to pick the voting system they want. Based upon these results, and in order to follow the provisions of the charter, both houses of the General Assembly will have to vote and allow for a 2/3 majority to make such change permanent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Gary McCollum, and then we have one WebEx speaker.
Welcome back.
I'm back, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You know, it's interesting to me when I hear people that are opposed to what you have done. The biggest disagreement that I've heard is that if we have this 10-1 system, that suddenly everybody's going to just go to their districts, and we're just going to have all this chaos, and we're not going to work together, and we're not going to lead. But I have some examples that show that that's not what's going to happen. As a matter of fact, if I may, Councilman Taylor, Councilman Ross Hammond, you appeared at C-TAC recently. And last time I checked, neither one of you represent that area, but you were there. And they were there because they care about this city. And so I hear a lot of people talking about we shouldn't go to 10-1, and it's going to do all kinds of, you know, there are all kinds of illegalities and what have you. But let's just be clear: 10-1 gave us the most diverse city council in the history of this city. It's doing great things for us. I applaud you for having the public hearing last week. I would encourage you to codify this, make this a vote. Let's take this to Richmond, and let's finish the work so that this can be a great city, not just for some of us, but for all of us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker via WebEx, Pilar Eteke. You are unmuted and may begin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Pilar Eteke. It's not Eteke, but that's okay. And I'm speaking this evening with regard to Agenda Item J-1, which And I'm speaking this evening with regard to Agenda Item J1, which sounds like most of the speakers thus far, that's what they've been focused on. Ordinances, ordinance to adopt the 2023 redistricting plan and to authorize the implementation of a 10-single-member district system of local elections. You will give the impression tonight that you have the authority to vote on this and then send it to the Virginia General Assembly. You have no such authority. Honestly, I feel like Alice in Wonderland when she's trying to figure out what is up and what is down, what is left and what is right, and what are the rules here. There are more people like myself who are waking up and realizing that we have people, multiple people, in positions of influence and power within our city government in multiple areas that are not and have not been following the rule of law, which in this case is the city charter. It doesn't matter which side of the argument you are on, for the 7-3-1 voting system or the 10-1 voting districts, because it all comes back to the charter. Personally, I favor the 10-1 redistricting system, but my opinion does not matter. The city charter takes precedence over state law and any judge's ruling, and the charter was never changed to adopt the 10-1 voting system. This has been acknowledged by the city attorney, it's been acknowledged by the voter registrar, multiple people, even the judge. The only way the city charter may be changed is by a public hearing or a referendum that is then voted on by we, the people. This would then go to the General Assembly and be put to a vote, and must have a two-thirds majority vote in both the House and the Senate in order to pass, and then, and only then, may the city charter be changed. I am disappointed that some of you knew this full well and continued on with the charade. This includes all city council members, all school board members, the school board clerk, the city attorney, and the three members of the Electoral Board, and I think several others that I have forgotten to mention. I'm equally dismayed that other men and women who pretend to be our councilmen and women have not studied the city charter to even know the rules and parameters by which you are authorized to operate. This is inexcusable. This is like going out on a professional baseball field and playing ball without playing by the rules, much less even knowing what the rules are. It's absolutely absurd. You would have a massive walkout by the crowd if such insanity were attempted, and yet you all continue to operate as if everything is legal. We had an election in which you let people believe they were voting in a 10-1 system. That election is null and void according to our charter and should never have happened. Therefore, every one of you is in office illegally and fraudulently. This must stop. We need a course correction. Without the restoration of law and adherence to the Virginia Beach City Charter, you all are essentially making up the rules as you go.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your input. Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the speakers.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, vote is open.
Give us one second. The vote is open. By a vote of 10 to 1, you have approved the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next J2, ordinance to establish Capital Project 100666, Dam Neck Road-London Bridge Connector improvements appropriate $22.5 million in public facility revenue bonds, dedicate certain real estate tax revenue, and authorize the execution of the development agreement for construction of infrastructure.
The first speaker is Mike Myers. After Mr. Myers is Mike Gerard.
Good evening, welcome.
Hey, good evening. So it was raining pretty hard tonight. My neighborhood, we only have one exit. It was raining. I was still able to get out of my neighborhood. We only need one exit. I don't see why we need to build a second exit for this facility known as Road A because of a little bit of rain. I mean, it's Virginia Beach, it rains, you wait 10 minutes, it's beautiful out, right? So I was just thinking about that as I drove over here. But I really want to talk about the development agreement. I do have lots of questions about it. A year ago, Mayor, I stood in front of you, we talked about it. We said there'll be a development agreement developed in conjunction with the communities. We gave up Ray Odom, who's not here tonight, but he gave his name to everybody. They were supposed to call him when a development agreement got underway. Every couple months, we would check in. We would check in with Ms. Henley's staff. Mr. Drew, he would let us know what's going on. There was no discussion of this development agreement. About a week ago, we got an email. I got it accidentally, I think. Somebody forwarded it to me and asked me if I knew what it was. I forwarded it to Ms. Wilson, right? And I think Ray forwarded it to you and Drew. But there was a meeting, right? There was a Q&amp;A session. Wonderful presentation. Gentlemen did a great job. But in that presentation, it was a presentation, it was a Q&amp;A, it wasn't a development agreement. And so I guess my question is, you know, if there's a development agreement that was supposed to be developed in association, you know, in conjunction with the communities, where is it? Why haven't the communities that directly border this development, why haven't we seen it? I mean, I'm the HOA president. I didn't see it, right? And everyone says, well, we can't get, we didn't know who to get ahold of. When I went back and I looked at the minutes from last year, my name, address, and phone number were in the minutes from last year, right? So I really don't think there was a fair attempt at this development agreement. The second thing is, the tenant that we're getting, they may be the best tenants in the whole world, best neighbors in the whole world, right? But they're a company, and companies change priorities and they fold. And if they leave, the next company that comes in, what's gonna hold their feet to the fire, right? Because maybe they're not as interested in having such a beautiful community as the current tenants that we're gonna get. And they're gonna do things differently. They're gonna be disruptive and nuisance. The other thing is, there's another developmental parcel that is tied to this whole thing. And I think we're opening ourselves up as a community. We've removed all the proffers from this parcel. We're prepared to move forward without a development agreement. This next tenant, this next parcel's gonna get developed, and I think they're gonna say, hey, they got it hooked up. We want hooked up, and it's not gonna matter what they do. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you coming.
The next speaker is Mike Gerard. Mark Gressiloff, sorry, I'm totally messing that last name up. And then Alan Prince.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thanks for letting me speak. So I gave a survey of you there. I own the property since 1996 that is immediately adjacent to this new road on Dam Neck Road to the east. If you look at that, you could see to the left where it says Southeast Parkway underneath where I wrote New Road. And you could also see where we gave up a right-of-way in purchasing this land that was going to be an exit off of that expressway. So the property has about 1,000 feet along Dam Neck Road and about 775 feet along the New Road that you're talking about, which I'm for, the whole plan. I just, I tuned in on Friday to your session, and Councilwoman Henley brought up this situation where there's these right-of-ways that have affected people. Well, we got very affected. Our project kind of got, we decided not to do it after, if this was the final straw, kind of, we basically had no access coming on there. We ended up negotiating with the city to make a road on the east side of the property next to us, because they also wanted a connector to Corporate Landing at the time. The back of this property, where that road would go, has a cul-de-sac with nothing on it right now. They wanted another entrance. But in any case, I want to take the opportunity, since that was brought up, that we are one of those affected people. We basically, you know, had to dissolve that project, that we were gonna actually put a large indoor arena that was gonna be ice skating and roller rink and this stuff or whatever. And I just want to be in the discussions on, you know, what's this gonna mean? I mean, we worked with city traffic at that time, we're willing to work again. Do they, you know, is it better to come in off the New Road there? Is that something that should be planned on while it's being constructed? Are these right-of-ways going to be removed or for sale? Or how do we get back to our frontage on Dam Neck Road, et cetera? So I just wanted to kind of be on record, say my information's there. Also, in reference to the previous speaker, I also was on the list. I was supposed to be contacted for meetings and wasn't. But in any case, if you have any questions, you know, this is something that I don't know, this is the right time to talk about it, but I wanted to be on record that we have a serious issue here of access to our 14 acres. And I am in negotiations right now. When I found out the expressway wasn't gonna happen, that was a few years ago, I put it up for sale, and do have an offer right now that we'll obviously come up with a plan. But I just wanted to say now might be the time to think about, where would you like to have access to this property, and maybe even our one next door, or maybe even coming across the back and also...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
...Corporate Landing. Okay, thank you.
The next speaker and last speaker is Alan Prince.
Okay, my name's Alan Prince. Thank you all for your time, giving us an opportunity to speak. I'm speaking in opposition to the speed that this is all gone, and like the last two speakers have said, the amount of notice that we've had to what seems like a plan that's in place. So my wife and I built in 2010 in Prince George Estates. Our house backs directly up to where the Road A will go. So we always knew there was a possibility of something going there, and it's not our place to determine what the city does with land it owns. Even though we back directly up to it, we can hope as neighbors that we can have a respectful relationship with what does go there. We've raised three kids there. All of the kids in our neighborhood play together. We've watched them grow up together. We just, we love our community. We know change can happen, but, you know, again, we want to just humbly ask that the council will take our very real concerns into consideration before you put any kind of stamps on this. The first thing that comes, the first point I'd like to say on that is the speed limit at 35. I know we've been told that trucks will not be using this road unless there are signs up and it's in writing, trucks will be using this road, and they'll probably be hitting that nice diesel plume of smoke to get to 35 miles an hour right at my backyard, coming from London Bridge or going to it. 35's high for the road and what they're telling us that it's being used for. No truck restrictions, basically just telling us that trucks won't use that road. We have a small distributorship, we have seven trucks, we do Boarshead. And if you gave any of my, I've said it 100 times, if you gave any of my drivers a chance to make two rights to get out to Dam Neck Road, or to wait in line to make a left in a line of trucks, my drivers are gonna choose to take two rights every time. So a sign up saying no trucks would be great. Not sure what the lighting situation's gonna be, but I'm sure we'll miss our stars. And no stoplight on London Bridge. We've heard that, I think what I heard was that there haven't been enough accidents to warrant putting a stoplight there. Well, God forbid my family or my neighbors' families give you the numbers that you need to get a stoplight up there. If that's going in there, do it safely, please. We'd like to request a deferment, and just hope that you can really take these concerns into consideration about that route. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Mayor, that's all the speakers.
Okay, do we have a motion?
First of all, I want to thank Mike Meyer, because he advised me of the community meeting that was put on as a presentation from the developer. If he hadn't, I wouldn't have known about it. So, Mike, thank you so much so that I could be there, and to see the people, and to listen to their concerns. So thank you very much. Somebody really dropped the ball on not letting me know, and of course, thanks to Ray Odom, Ms. Henley was able to be there. So being at that meeting and listening to everybody, I, what I heard loud and clear is the trucks. You know what? I don't blame them. I wouldn't want all those big trucks coming right behind my neighborhood. And so what's been worked out with the development agreement, there is a development agreement. And I've been calling almost every day, Alex Stiles, our attorney, to see if the verbiage was put in there about these trucks to make sure they do not go between Prince George Estates and Mayberry out to London Bridge Road. And it was really important to me that that be done for me to be able to vote on this tonight. And they were able to get all the wording done late morning today. And I'm gonna read you, this is part of 1.6 of the development agreement. Let me find where to start. "Contemplated by the traffic impact study, the developer will install signage and traffic channeling along Road A and Road B to direct line-haul traffic to turn left on Road A and limit or restrict line-haul traffic from entering or exiting from the south of the site, except in the case of an emergency." And I don't know, for some reason, it took lawyers a week to come up with that. But they did come up with, so it is in the development agreement that, and this was their intent, and, but as I told our attorney, well, intent's one thing, but we need it in writing. So we did get that into the development agreement. I also went and met with some of the people out of Mayberry, and they had some real concerns because the power lines were gonna be coming through from Dominion, and they were really afraid that the trees behind their house were gonna be cleared, and they wouldn't have a buffer from the lights and the different things coming out, the traffic coming out. So we worked with them, and so the rear of Mayberry, not all the way up that road, but quite a bit, a lot of extra landscaping is going to be installed as a landscape buffer. And the folks that I talked to, they really liked that idea as opposed to a fence. And so extra landscaping is gonna be done to protect those people. And the developer has done extensive landscaping buffers for the whole project, more than they actually had to do, to try to protect these people. Now, I did call and ask about, on the Friday night before, right after the meeting, to look into the stoplight, because I can understand the stoplight on London Bridge. And traffic engineering has looked at it. They don't think at this time that it warrants that there's not enough traffic that's gonna come through. However, it's gonna be reevaluated as the project comes along, and Kathy Warren can attest to this. If the traffic is enough, we will get a stoplight for you folks. So I tried very hard to listen to the objections and the things, because I really, I get it, I understand, this could be a big change, but I really think that these two neighborhoods, because of the truck traffic that's gonna go out on Dam Neck, it's in the development agreement, and hopefully that's gonna help protect them. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
Do we have a second? Any other discussion? Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week in my comments, I brought up the idea of economic development versus investments in infrastructure. And after the presentation, Mr. Shadler, I had a better understanding of how we're financing this, and the bonds, and the debt service. And we quite often hear about ROI when it comes to economic development. And there's a few communities in District 8 that are dealing with commercially zoned roads now, butting up against residential neighborhoods and the parking of trucks overnight, and so on and so forth. And a constituent posed a question to me this week for the council as it relates to Shore Drive and the reappropriation of the CIP, I believe, Phase 4. And the question is, what greater ROI is there for residents than safe roads, sidewalks that they can walk on, clear signage, and keeping our word with the 20-year commitment at the Shore Drive Plan? And so I'm not against economic development. It's an engine that drives the city. It's an engine that drives the city. But when we take away funds from projects to just give people sidewalks and improve road safety because there's no capacity, yet when economic opportunities come, we, we find a way to finance them, it's troubling. Because again, I know no greater ROI than to live in a community and be able to walk to 7-Eleven to go on a bike ride without having to hop two sidewalks. And so for those reasons, as a small business owner, but first, a representative of District Eight, I will not be voting for this project. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Barbara?
I do appreciate hearing the points that are in the development agreement. That hasn't been passed out, but it's very important that the things that were promised to the folks are, are put down in that development agreement. And I really appreciate that being done because certainly your buffers are important and the, the conditions and the information that was given at that meeting is very important. And, and I think it's also very relevant that the debt service that's going to be, pay off these bonds will be dedicated revenue coming from the real estate tax in this development. So the real estate tax generated by this development will pay for these infrastructure improvements, which I think is, is a very good thing to do. It's not been used, I don't think, before that I remember, but I'm glad to see that because I think it's important that we don't have to think that the taxes that people all over the city are, are paying are having to pay for this infrastructure. So that's, that's important. And then the other thing that one gentleman did mention, and it's about the Southeastern Expressway, I certainly will follow through on the Southeastern Expressway in general to look at, at these segments that the city did acquire the right-of-way for. Now that we're not going to build the road, how are we going to deal with that, those areas? Because I do realize that it impacts a lot of property that was going to be used in one way and now it's not. So we really do need to follow up on that, and I will see that we do that. Of course, this is one of those instances that if that Southeastern Expressway had been built, the impact on these neighborhoods would be substantially more. So I know this road is, is an impact, but it's not as bad as it would have been if the Southeastern had been built. So I think that with the buffering that's in there, it will be certainly a situation that has improved over what it would have been if, if that road had happened. So I think it's probably been worked out as, as well as it could, and we'll certainly follow it as it goes along and appreciate the, the applicant being willing to work with the community. That's so important.
Anyone else? Okay. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. By a vote of 10 to 1, you have approved the ordinance.
Okay. Moving on to item three, authorize the city manager to execute five leases for the use of city park properties, Ray Little League operations.
Mayor, there are no speakers.
Okay. Then we have a motion at this point. Chris?
Comment?
Yes.
I asked for this to be pulled and reviewing. I live across the street from one of these parks, and in reading through the leases, this is almost 61 acres of property that we leased back to the baseball fields. As it relates to Lynn Haven Baseball Field, it's also adjacent to Kings Grant Elementary. And when I was reading the, the lease, I recognized there wasn't language that dealt with capital improvements. And so this parking lot for the Lynn Haven Baseball Organization is being used by the participants for Kings Grant Recreation. They also have some other teams that come in, but during the school year, in the mornings, whether it be religious organizations, taxis, Ubers, parents dropping off their kids, the parking lots utilized for, to help out with overflow parking. I believe administration teachers are using the parking lot. The buses tend to park there. And so I had spoken with Public Works Director to, at least for the Lynn Haven piece, to look at amending the lease to include some type of capital improvements for the, the parking, the pavement. I've taken some pictures. The baseball field, Lynn Haven Organization has indicated that their board is looking at cost sharing, but there hasn't been any deferred maintenance on the lot. There are potholes, one or two craters. And so I just wanted to bring that out. I have no problem voting on, on this tonight, but I wanted to share with the body that that was a concern from the Little League Organization that has a new president, as well as the community, that this lot is shared and has multiple uses outside of just Little League baseball. And the, the lot is, is in desperate need of support. So those are my comments. But thank you.
Okay. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and along the same vein, I just want to raise, from the perspective of District Three, the issue of the lease with Plaza Little League. I heard from representatives of the league, as well as parents and families who participated in the league, who expressed some concern with the renewal of the lease on the basis around, there was one field that Plaza Little League formerly used, and that field is designated as part of the flood control program. And of course, the Little League does recognize and prioritizes the need for use of that field as part of the flood control program that protects the neighborhood where presumably many of the players and families live. But they also just want to make sure that we keep an eye on that, because if the city, for any reason, does not use that field, they'd like the opportunity to use it either as a field again or for other purposes. And I did have a chance to speak with the manager about that and city staff, and they seemed to be agreeable with that. And Plaza Little League is also comfortable with the language. But then there was also some discussion around maintenance of some areas that are adjacent to the field. And just very similar to what Councilmember Taylor was, I think, bringing to light is that we just need to continue to have conversations about that. And, and we, and really, these fields are such an important part of our community. And just maintaining positive lines of communication and working relationships is very important as we move forward with this lease and the operations moving forward. So I look forward to continued conversations about the need to Plaza Little League, and I'm sure many of you have similar scenarios in your districts. So thank you very much.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Okay. Any other discussion? Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the ordinance.
Okay. Moving on to item four, the ordinance to appropriate funds from the Tourism Investment Program, balance and award $90,000 grant to Hampton Roads Pride, Ray Pride at the Beach 2024, requested by Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, Councilmembers Bellucci, Olcom, Remick, Rossammon, Rouse, Schulman, Taylor, and movement.
The first speaker is Nick Dittelman, and then Jamar Davis.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here again. Thank you for, first of all, for your support. We had an exceptionally successful Pride Month, and it was due to largely from cities like yourselves. I was pleasured and privileged to be standing here and accepting the proclamation past June, so I acknowledge that, and I thank each one of you. Those of you who are physically present at events as well, you were noted and are appreciated. We continue to see economic growth from events such as the one that we hope to do with Virginia Beach. You're a large city with a large group of citizens of various minorities and majorities, and we have to ensure that these events speak to each and every single one of you. It's a large task. I fully understand that. You have a large group in the veteran community and military community. You have a large group in the Filipino community. You have a large group of those of color, the LGBTQ+, and you have to make sure we're all excited and ready to work with you, and you're doing a great job. This next year, we hope to go bigger and better. We drive tens of thousands of people to an event not far from here in June, and we hope and wish to do the same, that very same weekend, here in Virginia Beach. You're a large city of what much is given, much is expected, and we fully expect to partner with you on this. We expect to see your economic growth continue to rise as we continue to improve on these events, and we fully hope to see you there next June. Thank you for your time.
Thanks a bunch for coming.
The next speaker is Jamar Davis. After Mr. Davis is Gary McCollum.
Greetings, Mayor Dyer, members of City Council. I extend my gratitude today to be in front of all of you. I proudly serve on the Hampton Roads Pride Board of Directors. As a resident of Hampton Roads and a member of the LGBTQIA+ community, I am truly appreciative of the platform that you've presented for me to address you today. It's an honor to represent my, my community. I am thankful for the inclusive environment that the 757 Hampton Roads region has, has given me, including Virginia Beach. It has fostered a community for me to express my true self with no fear. The significance of hosting inclusive, inclusive events in our community cannot be overstated. Not only do they contribute to the economic growth of the cities that embrace them, but they also play a pivotal role in nurturing and more accepting society. We hold in high regard the consistent support and investment that the city of Virginia Beach has dedicated to our community and to the Hampton, and to Hampton Roads Pride. I mean, the great bragging rights that you all have on consecutively achieving the highest and perfect end debt score for the Human Rights Campaign just shows how dedicated you all are to making a more inclusive city. The item listed as J4 on tonight's agenda stands as another stride in the journey to, of collaboration. Its approval will pave the way for a distinctive experience tailored towards my community and its allies across the region. Our vision for next year entails an approach capitalizing on our beautiful beach, forging new partnerships with hotels and resorts, while offering an oasis experience that's accessible to everyone. This ambiance will follow a month filled with community-driven events around the region, including city festivals, breweries, including Pride and the Vibe, Black Party, Fabulous Phoebus in Hampton. We've extended it over to Portsmouth and Chesapeake, and the highlight of our calendar, which ends with Pride Fest at Norfolk Town Point Park. With unwavering, unwavering commitment, we stand by Virginia Beach eagerly anticipating an even more expansive and family-oriented investment within the heart of the region. In closing, I just want to extend my gratitude for the time and consideration to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gary McCollum.
Welcome back.
Mr. Mayor, I have to apologize. I jumped the gun. I spoke on the earlier issue, this issue first, but let me just say a quick comment about the issue that was on the consent agenda with regard to the staffing, additional staff person for the Citizens Review Board. I'm clearly in support of that. I would ask that you move with posthaste to get that body stood up and move forward.
We will, Gary. You have to stick to the item at hand. Your message is-
So this, this issue, again, you know, I think, as I said, I'm in total support of this, and you might say, well, you know, he's a licensed ordained minister. Why would he be up here doing this? Well, my faith tells me to judge no one, but to love everyone. And I think it will be a great signal tonight if there was a unanimous vote to support this effort. And so just want to make sure that you, you heard that. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move for approval and would like to just make a, just a very brief comment if, if I could.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments? Michael?
Thank you.
And then Chris?
I just want to, first of all, thank the speakers from Hampton Roads Pride and the LGBTQ+ community. I see Nick, Jamar, Jason McDonald, Colber Kaiser. I also want to recognize my friends from the Convention and Visitors Bureau who are here, I know, and have been working very closely to develop a strategy that this authorizing resolution will fund and unlock potential. I think the speakers really said it best, and I also want to thank Mr. McCollum for his, for speaking and for his support. And, and finally, but not least, I want to thank the body for really rallying around this effort and therefore rallying around the community we serve. This initiative is, it does represent a change in investment from previous events that relate to Pride and the LGBTQ+ community, but is long overdue. What we're talking about here is expanding access to resources that other constituencies and communities have long enjoyed. We have room in this great city and on this great resort to welcome everyone. We have opportunity to demonstrate that Virginia Beach is an inclusive community. We do have work to do, but we, we are doing that work, and we are working together toward building a more inclusive community where each and every person is treated with the dignity and respect that we deserve. What this authorization and what this event represents is a step forward in human relations, community relations, connectedness, and, as the speakers noted, it provides and unlocks economic opportunity and potential that Virginia Beach hasn't enjoyed because it hasn't been perceived always as a place where members from this constituency have been welcomed. And so all of this together represents a tremendous win. Is the process perfect? No, it's not. Are there gaps? Sure. Is there room to make things better in the future? Absolutely. And I look forward to working with the community and with this body and with staff to ensure that happens. But in the meantime, let's send the signal that Mr. McCollum referenced. Let's take this step and make sure that our resort and our community is open, accessible, and enjoyed by everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a really important issue, an important event. As a, the sixth generation to live in this city, whose great, great-grandmother worked at the Francis Land House when it was a residence, whose mother integrated Kings Grant Elementary School, whose father worked at the Princess Anne and Cavalier when he couldn't play golf or go to the beach. This city has a rich history, shared heritage that's not always exemplified through the events we have. But the truth is, there are cultural challenges in this city. Another truth is, some individuals' life experiences are not appreciated or valued. A truth is, there is many times a lack of communication. And communication can be defined as the ability to articulate ideas, express emotions, engage in dialogue, question, listen, and respond. And so when I saw the, the ordinance, it piqued my interest because it, it was planned. It's going to be implemented by beach events, which has an incredible reputation. And that spoke of organization. And oftentimes, when those of the different minority or culture are given an opportunity to host events, there's increased scrutiny, some, some fair and some unfair. As I read through the ordinance, I was impressed with Councilmember Lucci's ability to collaborate with our CVB to, to receive a media budget of $13,000. And that's important because it shows his ability as, as a councilperson to get a greater appropriation in media budget than the Pride Fest got in year one or two, and that's significant. It's supported by the CVB. They're clear that the target audience is the LGBTQ+ audiences. It's significant because they're going to have access to resources to help them target the geographical source markets within the area, the mid-Atlantic and other markets. And so I want to commend Councilmember Lucci on his ability to effectively collaborate with stakeholders. This will be a significant investment that will provide educational programming, panel discussions to increase understanding of the LGBTQ+ community. panel discussions to increase understanding of the LGBTQ+ community and their challenges. And so I look forward to supporting it in 2024 Pride Fest. Thank you.
Anyone else? Barbara?
Yes, and I guess this is why Mr. Lucci knew or didn't ask me to put my name on the support list because he knew I was going to ask these questions because I've been asking them of all of these events that have been coming to the city council for grants rather than going through the budget process. That is the normal process for how we allocate the expenditure of public dollars. This has absolutely nothing to do with the groups involved, with the persons involved, with the social issues. It has to do with how we are allocating public tax dollars. And my concern is that we have to apply the same process to everybody, to all of the groups, to all of the organizations that are going to have events that are going to use public tax dollars. There's accountability that's important to the public if we're going to use their money for anything. So it's no different from any other expenditure that we have. And to have these events coming directly to the council for approval rather than going through the normal budgeting process, to me, it's sort of like the earmarks and so forth that we hear about. I did ask for the application that was filed for this, and I was told that there had not been one since it was coming directly from a council member. And so it did not have a staff analysis, which I'd asked for. And I'm really concerned because our responsibility is to provide services, but we have to do it by taking money from people in taxes. And therefore, we have to have this process that treats everybody the same and provides for accountability. And I've been saying this over and over and over again with other groups as well and with allocations that we have been making directly to organizations rather than going through our normal process of the community organization grant process. I think we're deviating from past processes that have required accountability, and that's not the right thing for us to be doing going forward. And so I will simply be continuing this because I just don't think this is the right way that we allocate dollars. A couple of years ago, we stopped charging the groups who had events for the services that the city provides. And so now, we're providing services at no cost. We're providing the security, and that's heavy. That's got to be a heavy cost, the security and all of the public services that we're providing. And now, in addition to that, we're handing out grants, in this case, a $90,000 grant, plus $13,000 in Convention and Visitors Bureau media budget. And so I'm not certainly against the group that's doing this. I wasn't against the other groups that I have asked these same questions for. I'm just saying we need to have the proper process to determine how we're going to approve the use of public dollars. And that's my position, and I'm sorry, but if you are offended, I feel it's my responsibility to make sure we're handling the public's dollars appropriately.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Sabrina?
So I'm certainly happy to support the ordinance. And I learned about it during putting forth an ordinance for additional funding for the Juneteenth Festival. And I remember talking to Councilmember Lucci and telling him I would absolutely support it and am very supportive of it. I would say this in listening to my colleagues' response. I do also remember during our conversation about Juneteenth that there was a consensus to have further discussion on protocol and procedure policy because there are a lot of good causes, events, and communities that we should celebrate, and all of them certainly merit our support. But I think, as was mentioned and in the conversation, but there has to be a way to support all the same in terms of services or, you know, what is the protocol to go through? Is it the budget? And so, you know, there is a discussion that we would sit down and talk about it. And sometimes there is a pattern where we say that, but we don't actually execute that request. And so my thought is, I think it's a meaningful conversation to have. Perhaps it's a conversation we can have at our upcoming retreat. I think it merits a conversation. And I'm happy to work on some type of protocol and policy going forward that will help with ensuring that folks and those who bring these types of events are... There is a pattern that you go through. There are resources that are available to all and find out how we can support each calls and each event. And so I certainly do hear my colleagues' concerns, and I think it merits a discussion. But I, this, you know, my comments in no way take away from my support from the ordinance. I do support it. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, let's open the vote.
Vote is open. By a vote of 10 to 1, you have approved the ordinance.
Okeydokey. And then moving on to the final ordinance before we move on, to appropriate $750,000 from the Tourism Investment Fund balance from FY 2023-24 Convention and Visitors Bureau operated budget and authorize city manager to execute a sponsorship agreement with Odyssey of Virginia LLC for a new fall music festival.
The first speaker is David Leader. David Leader. The next speaker, are you Mr. Leader? Oh, go ahead and come on down, sir.
Hey, how you doing?
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, Mayor Bobby D. I wanted to address council tonight about the funding in the Odyssey event that's taking place in October. So my name is David Leader. I have a nonprofit called The Lamb's Foundation, which stands for Love All My Brothers and Sisters. We focus on mentoring the youth, fashion, and community events. First, I'd like to say I'm in favor of the Odyssey event being brought to the oceanfront. And I'm also educating myself in the process of creating diverse and sustainable events within the city. I enjoy working with the city of Virginia Beach as my team and I created a series of events that we implemented at the Virginia Beach Resort area this year and last, including Something in the Water, Community Stage, Juneteenth at the Beach, and Virginia Swim Week that we just recently done last week. We also appreciate the support we received from the city's council to increase our budget for Juneteenth at the Beach. I'm curious to know what ways can local organizations benefit, partner, or collaborate with national organizations like Odyssey that are partnering with the city of Virginia Beach? I understand you may not be able to answer this now, but I would like the opportunity in a different forum to discuss ways to collaborate in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Archie Boone Jr. After Mr. Boone is Allison Swan.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening to ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Archie Boone. And since 2019, I've been working in the area here on the opioid epidemic, specifically helping individuals, families, community stakeholders to know how to reverse the opioid overdose by the use of naloxone. When it comes to events that have any type of musical impact or musicians and individuals who are coming and gathering, it is very important that we consider the public health aspects and the impact that entertainers have when they're bringing their music and entertainment platforms to the city of Virginia Beach. The reason why is because we know that 65% of young people who are addicted to heroin, they get started from prescription pain medication. A lot of the artists that they're listening to now are glorifying the use of fentanyl, glorifying the use of illicit drugs. And this type of music, these behaviors that are a part of their platform, it's really harming youth and young adults. And I am in favor of what Odyssey is actually bringing because they are one of the organizations that helps to target young people, youth, and young adults. They have a very strong project through directly going to the phone. With that being said, there is a strategic prevention framework that community services boards use as well as behavioral intervention programs and community organizations. And that program and those projects allow for there to be a very robust way to get information from youth and young adults who are at these events that are put on within the city. There's a geofencing process which will send messaging that will help to allow young people to know that they can get help, whether it be for suicide prevention, for campaigns that will say, hey, use naloxone if you're going to be using any pills that you don't know what they are. So this type of messaging is called environmental prevention. And we have organizations all over the city of Virginia Beach who are partnering together to make sure that this type of messaging is at these type of events that we have. But we have to make sure that we ask for any public health organizations to come forward and work with these organizations like Odyssey, who will receive the allocation of funds. I thank you for your time and also for your consideration.
Thank you. And Archie, do me a favor. Get in touch with me. We're going to be in the process of launching a HOPE initiative, helping our people excel. I'd like to bring you to the table for a discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Allison Swan. After Ms. Swan is Bruce Berlin.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm Allison Swan. I'm a lifelong resident, and I'm an artist. And I was shocked to see that the Odyssey concerts that they were planning on the weekend of October 20th also runs concurrently with Boardwalk Art Show. One of my dreams as a little girl, walking down the boardwalk in the summer, was to one day be in the Boardwalk Art Show. And I worked a long time to be able to get in, and I'm honored to be a part of it. One of the big concerns that I have is the news article stated that the Odyssey concert was going to be at 31st Street, which is also where the Boardwalk Art Show is. And it runs, last year it ran from 24th Street up to 32nd Street, I think. And this year, they're talking about it going to 35th Street. So this poses a huge challenge for artists. Even if the concerts are only run in the evening, one of the challenges that we have is the safety of our artwork. I have a tent that's $2,000. And then I usually have about $35,000, $40,000 worth of artwork in my tent. So if there's a concert event with people drinking and having a great time occupying the exact same space as the Boardwalk Art Show, every evening, I've got to fight the crowds, unload 50 paintings out of my tent, take them into my van, take them home, set them back up the next morning. Excuse me, it's been a long time since I spoke with y'all. Anyway, so it's a huge challenge. Our tents are around $2,000. So you've got 150 tents. That's $300,000 worth of tents sitting on the boardwalk. The drive-off program, the unpacking program Sunday, we drive our cars and our vans onto the boardwalk. We unload, we break down our tents, we check it all in, go home, rest, and hopefully, we've had a great weekend. One of the big problems is that it's also, a rock concert or whatever venue they choose as far as the theme of the concert is not conducive to selling artwork. The music is loud, the clientele is entirely different. And so we're facing a lot of challenges. We're worried about security. The big thing that we're really worried about is parking. The elephant in the room at the Virginia Beach Oceanfront is parking. So you're not going to have somebody come down to the event on a shuttle bus, buy a big 24 by 48 painting, yay! And they're not going to be able to take it home. So the clients aren't going to be able to get to the boardwalk, and we're going to have a big problem. So my hope is that instead of running the art show at 31st, I mean, the, excuse me, instead of running the concerts by Audacity at 31st Street, that it's moved further south on the beach or possibly the following weekend. I'm not opposed to it. I've looked at their concert series. They look wonderful. So I'm in favor of the concerts, but just not in the same concurrent space as Boardwalk Art Show. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your time.
The next speaker is Bruce Berlin. After Mr. Berlin is Gary McCollum.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, my name is Bruce Berlin. And many of you know me as one of the managing partners of Venture Realty Group. But today, I'm here as a citizen of Virginia Beach and more importantly, as current vice chair of Virginia Museum of Contemporary Art, known as Virginia Mocha. We were surprised, as I know many of you were, to learn of the proposed music festival here before you tonight is proposed the weekend of October 20th through 22nd, the same weekend as Virginia Mocha's annual Boardwalk Art Show. The Boardwalk Art Show has a longstanding history here in Virginia Beach and one that brings many artists, citizens, and tourists to the boardwalk to enjoy the events of this weekend. Last year's event, which included the Beach Club tent setup in Neptune Park, was used as a gathering and business network space the entire weekend. This year's main sponsoring partner, as last year, is PNC Bank, that has committed $50,000 to sponsor the Boardwalk Art Show. At the Beach Club this year, we'll be at the Sheraton at 31st Street. As when we needed to commit the Beach Club location, we were told that the Neptune Park would not be available due to modifications and improvements. Virginia Mocha certainly wants to be a good corporate citizen. We want you, our council, to continue to bring events to the boardwalk and our beach at this time of year and throughout all weekends of the year. However, the potential conflict of the music festival and having it located within the Boardwalk Art Show's footprint at the north end of the boardwalk, where our artists' tents will be located, is problematic for the following reasons, and as so eloquently stated by the previous speaker. Setup for our event begins Wednesday, when tents are installed on the boardwalk through the Thursday evening. An army of volunteers and staff assist artists with driving onto the boardwalk, loading in their art, and then setting up their displays. The artists leave much of their art overnight in their tents to then be ready throughout the show. The artists benefit from a wide variety of hotel room rates at a lower seasonal shoulder rate than may be booked up if the festival is also booked. Increased prices may impede artists from participating in the show. Virginia Mocha's sponsors, supporters, artists, and other invited guests, included all of you at City Council, are invited to the celebratory events at the Beach Club throughout the weekend, especially the opening night party on Thursday night. The event itself provides shoulder-to-shoulder pedestrian traffic on the boardwalk during our show for the event hours that we are open. Since the newspaper article appeared last week, Virginia Mocha has fielded numerous calls and emails from artists concerned about the location of the festival and many saying that they will actually cancel their booth if the city approves our festival within the footprint of the Boardwalk Art Show. I know that some of you have personally received calls and emails from local citizens that are longtime members of the art community voicing their concern. Let me again reiterate that we want to be a good corporate citizen. But if you want our opinion, all of this year's logistics are already worked out so that the Boardwalk Art Show can be on that weekend. Invitations are printed, T-shirts are ready to do at a production, deposits have been made. We would ask the city council to move the festival south of 24th Street so it's not overlaid on our booths on the boardwalk and ask the city to cover the cost of additional security needed to protect the artists' booths overnight for the entire length of the show. Thank you for your time. Virginia Mocha appreciates all the support that the city and city council has given us. us, and we look forward to another exciting and successful Boardwalk Art Show.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gary McCollum.
Welcome back.
This is the last time. I'm going to dinner after this. Some of you may not know this, but I was on the port board, and we know the four economic, major economic drivers in this region, the port, military, tourism, agriculture. And I got applaud Sabrina, Councilmember Woodin, because she and others are recognizing that there is this creative economy, that we can have a fifth wheel, if you will. And so I applaud you for what you're doing with Odyssey and what we're trying to do. My concern is, something my father-in-law would say, is if you show me somebody in a hurry, they're either coming from trouble or heading toward trouble. And I created a company where we put on concerts. We did a Mother's Day concert at Chartway, working with local promoters, Bobby Brown and some other folks. There's a Keith Sweat concert coming in September 1st, Labor Day. I can tell you, it takes a lot to do this. And so my concern is the timing on this. If we think that we can do this now and have a concert in October, we've seen the conflicts already. I don't know if that's a great idea. You heard Mr. Leader say, they're great young, creative people in this area. Why not, let's talk to Odyssey, let's build some relationships, and let's do a big thing next October. Because shoulder months, that's what we need. We need something like this. My concern, if we go out and spend $750,000, we're doing it quickly, we really don't have the buy-in, the conflicts are there, we may be doing something that will hurt our efforts going forward. So again, I applaud you for looking, Mr. Manager, for looking at doing something like this, because we need to drive revenue in the shoulder months. But the timing of this, and the fact that we don't have local people, Odyssey, as you know, is a major company. I think they're out of Philly? Yeah, out of Philly. But there's some great folks here. You've seen one already. I created a company already. Not that I want to be involved, but I would provide advice, counsel, because I'm doing this in Norfolk already. I think we can do this in a better way if we just think through this. And so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion? Worth?
Sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be moving for approval of the ordinance, and let me give some reasons why and some explanations. Number one, Odyssey and the Convention and Visitors Bureau, CVB, I want to congratulate you for your work. This has been in discussion for a number of months. This is a shoulder month. The reason why CVB chose this weekend was to enhance the Boardwalk Art Show. And so, let me go ahead and tell this right now. I have not a promise put up, an effort to move the concert south of 20th Street, so it will not be in conflict with the Boardwalk Art Show. Secondly, Odyssey also has said we could, they could move the weekend to the next weekend. So we hear Mocha's concern, we think this is an enhancement to the weekend, this is a shoulder month, I think it's an enhancement to either the concert and the Boardwalk Art Show. There's no bigger fan, no bigger fan of the Boardwalk Art Show than me. And there are a lot of great local artists, it's a great weekend, so I think this is a great marriage, if you will, we'll try it out. And yes, we should build on this weekend with other groups, Team Lamb or others. Mr. McCollum, appreciate the speakers tonight. I have heard from friends who are artists in this Boardwalk Art Show, and I hear what you're saying, I think we're going to work this out. So I'll move for approval.
Okay. Do we have a second first, and then we'll have-
Second.
Okay. Michael, you're up, and then Rosemary.
Well, Mr. Remick said there's no bigger fan of the Boardwalk Art Show than he is, but I challenge, I'm at least an equal fan of the Boardwalk Art Show. As the co-leasance to Virginia Mocha, which is a great privilege with Councilmember Remick, I just want to affirm his comments about the coordination and responsiveness to the concerns that Virginia Mocha, I think, meritoriously raised. And I appreciate Virginia Mocha's flexibility and responsiveness to what may be happening in the city, as well as the artists and supporters. I think there is room to coexist, and so I'm really grateful for that. I do think we need to think about, you know, how we structure all of this, the conversation that occurred about the previous appropriation, the conversations that occurred a couple weeks ago about another, a different appropriation, and it's nice to see Team Lamb and Mr. Leader here. I think what they reveal is potential disparities in how the city has historically and presently evaluating event production and resort-based events and concerts and celebrations. But they also, while at the same time reveal disparities, they also reveal great opportunities. And that's where I take a departure from the perspective that Councilmember Henley shared, because there are people being finally included who were not included previously. And this is not necessarily the result of active discrimination, it's the result at times of unintentional omission. And either whether it's one or the other, the result is that people have been excluded. And whether we're talking about a major partnership like Odyssey, or whether we're talking about the smaller, community-based events where people who live and work in Virginia Beach understand that they have and know they have equal access and opportunity to enjoy all the incredible amenities there, whether it's the Boardwalk Art Show, Neptune Festival, are tried and true, among the most tried and true festivals, or emerging ones like this one with Odyssey. I think there is no one-size-fits-all. There is no one-size-fits-all. And the council will make mistakes, and the city professionals who plan these things will sometimes get amiss. But I think what you see here is two things. I think you see increased programming and activation of the most, one of the most, second to the great people who live here, perhaps the other great resource we have, is the beach and the resort. And what we're seeing is an activation of that space unlike any other time in our history. And yeah, there's some flaws in it, but isn't it great to see a diverse and kaleidoscopic array of individuals and organizations having an opportunity to enjoy that space? And we're going to have growing pains here and some tension points there, but at the end of the day, what I think we see here is a community commitment to make sure that everybody has a chance to enjoy the beach and the economic, not only the enjoyment of recreational opportunities that exist there, but also the economic opportunities that exist there. And I'm very pleased by the progress that we're making, at the same time acknowledging the imperfections in the process.
Thank you. Rosemary?
Thank you. I'm a big fan of the Boardwalk Art Show as well, and in my home, I have a lot of items that I have purchased from the artists there. So I want to make sure that they are protected. Is Nancy Hellman here? Oh, can you come down and answer a question for me? So when I heard it was going to be at the north end of the beach, this Odyssey, I felt goodness, thank goodness, because so much has been down at the south end. And let me tell you, the people that, there's a lot of people that live down there, and they are festivaled out. They have something in the water, the beach was closed for five weeks, you know, two weeks, they had at least two and a half weeks to get ready, two and a half weeks to take it down. And then there was Beach It, and then there's Bulls and Barrels, and there's been tons and tons of things right along there that it's, and I live down there too. I mean, you almost feel like you're in jail when they start putting up the fences, and you can't get out. And so I want to know, if this gets moved, where it's going to be, because please don't tell me it's going to be down on Fifth Street.
Do you want me to go?
Yeah.
Our resort management office spoke with the promoter today, and they're looking at 17th Street south of the pier. So that would be outside of the Boardwalk Art Show footprint, but not all the way at the south end of the beach, so sort of dead center. That's the conversation that took place today. I can't confirm that that's-
How many blocks down is it going to come?
I don't have that answer for you in the present, but if you give me till tomorrow, I'll make sure we have that.
We have to vote on this thing tonight. This is important to me, this is in my district, and I will tell you, the people are really tired of the festivals. And they understand that they're good for the city, but we've got to do them in moderation. And they've already had more than their share down at the south end. Someone mentioned 24th Street, is that a possibility?
I think the goal was to move outside of the footprint for Boardwalk Art Show, to go 17th Street south of the pier. 17th Street south of the pier, not at 3rd Street. That's the message I'm getting from resort management. Sorry, my team is trying to provide me with information.
From 17th Street till-
If you, if you-
How many blocks is it going to entail?
If you can take your next speaker, I'll get you an answer as to how far the footprint will go down, how many blocks it will take up, to achieve the 12,000 people that would be the maximum that the event promoter has suggested they would sell tickets for.
Okay.
Okay. Patrick, did you have a comment?
No, my comment came from, my response came from Nancy, so Nancy's trying to get the information from her team.
But if there's any way you can get it on the other, if you get it on the other side of the pier, I would be happier.
Okay. If you give me a moment, I'm reaching out to them now and see if we can't do this in real time.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Okay, Barbara?
Oh, maybe, I may have to mic off.
Mic, mic. Put your mic on.
Okay. Well, I wanted to catch her before she got farther down. Well, I asked questions about this one, like everybody else. I asked to see the application, and I got this little booklet here, and I thought, well, good, this is going to be a lot of information, but it's just some pictures. But I do notice that on one page in writing, in red, it had September 22nd, three days. And so I don't know, didn't know if this was just put on today, or if y'all were, but it looks like at one point Odyssey was looking at September 22nd.
Yes. At our suggestion, they moved later into the season, which would help expand our tourism season and provide activation into the month of October, when other dates were not available. We did look at all dates. The notes you're seeing on there are notes that were taken from a meeting, it's just the only copy that we had.
Okay, so this must be your worksheet.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I think it's, that this was, something was put together rather hastily. The fact that the Boardwalk Art Show folks didn't even know about this until they saw the article in the newspaper really disturbs me, because that's a pretty big, for a long, long time, it's been a pretty big part of the boardwalk, and parking is a problem. So, you know, if you're going to be putting these two events down there at the same time, not all the way to the south, I can see those folks have had it, where are people going to park? It sounds, I don't know, I'm really concerned that we're not looking at these things thoroughly. And, I mean, to not even recognize that it was going to be such a conflict with the art show really gives me a lot of concern.
I think the original goal was to create a synergy where the timing could work, where the concerts would start after the Boardwalk-
The timing might work, but they're not, the audiences are not that compatible. And I really have to worry about the security, and I think the security of the artist's artwork, where they normally would be leaving it out there, and now they're going to have to take it home every night, I mean, that's a pretty big imposition. I'm really concerned, because the city also provides a lot of funding for the Boardwalk Art Show-
Correct.
-which I have supported. And it disturbs me that they didn't, they weren't consulted in this. I think we've got to work on our process. I think this has been hurriedly put together with Odyssey. We did hear something about it a couple of weeks ago for the first time.
Yes.
But obviously, it wasn't ready to be in our budget this year, because this all came about after the budget. And I think we're just trying to put things together too quickly, and we're therefore not able to do it as well from the budgeting standpoint, as well as the implication of it. And I would certainly hope we're going to work with the neighborhoods more, because it is an imposition to the hotels and the tourists who come down to have a nice, relaxing weekend on the beach. We got an email from a very unhappy tourist a few weeks ago after another event that totally disturbed and disrupted their vacation at Virginia Beach that they had taken every year, and said, we're going to be rethinking for next year. I think we really ought to start paying a little bit of attention to all of this and make sure it's coordinated, and not try to do it very hastily like this apparently was done. I mean, I was kind of leaning towards supporting this, because it looks like it had had a little more look, but I declare, I don't think I can, because I just don't think it's been planned appropriately, and I don't think these two events are that compatible. And I'm sorry, but I think I'm going to have to vote no again.
Okay. Nancy, let me ask you, is it unusual to have multiple events at the oceanfront on weekends?
No, it's not unusual to have multiple events going on at the same time. That's our pledge, to be an oceanfront and a Virginia Beach for everybody, and so that's why you see our most diverse lineup of programming ever, I think, in probably the history of Virginia Beach. So having multiple things happening at once is definitely something that our oceanfront is used to, but I understand about the fatigue on the south end, and working to try and get out of the footprint of the Boardwalk Art Show, and create synergies where events can create an ecosystem where everybody gets to come out and enjoy all of the activities that are going on at the oceanfront. So, you know, I'll wait for your direction, and I'll wait for your answer on tonight. The event promoter is definitely standing by to make their final, their final push to the finish line, so it's definitely up to City Council, just let me know.
And if I could just make a comment, you know, once again, with the suggestion that we do everything during a budget cycle, you know, that's a once-a-year occurrence that takes a number of months. In terms of Odyssey, what was it, last year, they put an event together with the-
East Coast Surfing Championships.
With the East Coast Surfing Championships, in very, very short order and successfully. And while their headquarters is in Philadelphia, they have a strong local presence here, as a matter of fact, the president has his offices here and a number of radio stations that are very, very well-respected. And I think part of the thing, you know, and part of the makeup and the composition of this, you know, as we attempt to go into the shoulder season, is that we get national exposure at the, you know, at the beach, and part of the deal is national exposure wrapped as radio network, which is pretty much a national thing that would put, you know, a brand on Virginia Beach. So, you know, there are positives here. And, you know, once again, Mr. McCollum and I had some discussions about maybe having a show where we feature just local artists, you know, as a strong possibility to increase that diversity. But the thing is, I'm sure that this can get worked out, and I think, you know, I would like to, you know, move forward and we just get the details worked out.
Yeah, our team is working daily with the event promoter to try and ensure that we can make all of the details come together and work to be a successful weekend for the city. That's always our goal. And when we ever, whenever we get new opportunities that come our way, you know, City Council is our first stop, and this one came to us a little bit late, so you got to hear it a little bit late, but we think it's got merit, and so it was our job to bring it to you and go over the opportunities and the art of the possible.
Okay. Okay. Amelia?
Yeah, I just want to ask one thing, because as an art person myself, music and art-
Yes.
-I did find out late too about the art show on both ends. Do they have to know the answer tonight, or can we defer it to next week where we have those parts ironed out?
So I will tell you, if the event promoter were here, he would probably tell you time is of the essence, because they want to nail down the artists that are going to be performing, but it's the choice of City Council. So you just let us know, and we'll be the conduit to deliver the message.
And this is the last meeting for a couple of weeks.
I guess we call a special meeting.
I tell you what, that might be, would that be a fair compromise? Yeah. Okay, Chris, you have your hand up.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Nancy, I will have a couple of questions.
Oh, it's for me too? Okay.
I'm going to be coming from a kind of different angle. I was told this was an unsolicited proposal that came to us. Is that accurate? Okay. In reading it, so we're talking about $750,000 cash, and, Mr. Manager, this is the first time we've done this type of deal.
Yes. So the cash sponsorship that the city is going to be giving to Odyssey will be returned to us in a $750,000 media buy. This proposal was delivered to the deputy city manager, who's no longer with the city of Virginia Beach, briefed in closed session to discuss the terms of the deal. So it would be an advertising buy that our tourism program could use to promote tourism in Virginia Beach, not the festival that's coming up. So it would be an extension of our ad campaign.
Okay, thank you. So we have $750,000 coming from TIP. CVB is kind of leading with the sponsorship agreement, and this is the Odyssey that's out of Philadelphia, correct?
It's Odyssey, Virginia, but Odyssey- It's Odyssey, Virginia, but Odyssey's parent company, I believe, is out of Philadelphia. But Odyssey, Virginia is the one who's hosting and promoting this event.
Thank you. For national radio ad buy to promote Virginia Beach as a travel and tourist destination. And that was interesting, because when I went to page 132 of our operating budget, and I looked at the marketing and tourism, marketing and tourism marketing, the first was out of the general fund, $461,147 that we approved in the budget for tourism marketing. And then there's FD 240, Tourism Advertising Program, which has 11,068,206. And then we have Tourism Marketing, 698,203. That's roughly 11.7 million dollars that we appropriated to, to CVB to do marketing.
Correct.
And so, the value proposition, that Odyssey would get $750,000 on top of the 11.7 million we're spending on marketing, I'm trying to wrap my head around that. I would like to let Odyssey spend the 1.5 to promote the event without any CVB or TIP money. Pivoting to the Boardwalk Art Festival, as a local, my high school art teacher, for the first time, Mark Butts, is going to be an artist. He's also the coach of the 2002 First Colonia City Championship Team, Go Patriots. Currently, the Boardwalk Art Festival, for those listening, of course, this is scheduled and planned for the footprint. I've heard tonight that it's been being planned, planned for months. It doesn't appear that it's been being planned for months. The Boardwalk Art Festival is the largest-running annual oceanfront event since 1956. An estimated 200,000 to 250,000 visitors for the three-day show. That's according to Mocha and Veer Magazine's article last year. There's a $200,000 appropriation in our FY 23-24 budget. So, Odyssey, this national firm that I'm going to get to in a minute, is getting 3X what we're actually investing in the art show. 15 million in economic impact this Boardwalk Art Show produces. $600,000 estimate in but-for taxes. Locals and visitors from over 30 states, including Coach Butts. As I went on to hotels.com, many of my colleagues may not know, I spent some time in the hospitality industry. Already, this weekend, rates are at 230 to 350 a night, which is a 30% to 40% increase, week prior and week after. If you want, go to hotels.com, punch in the dates, pick a hotel, and then compare. And so, my question, and I go to Church of Council and Remick, I'm not going to pick on them, but I keep hearing enhancement. How much more enhancement do residents and visitors need this weekend? And then, can staff quantify the ROI for the public? Because increased rates are going to impact locals, they're going to impact artists. If this was a week prior, which I wouldn't support, or a week after, at 750,000 with 11.7 million that we're already spending in advertising, I don't know how you quantify ROI for the public. Odyssey should make the event free. That's what I would love to see. This weekend is the wrong option for this. And furthermore, Mr. McCollum, he brought up a saying from the old country. My, my great-grandmother used to say first one thing, then another. According to billboard.com, Odyssey operates in a difficult business that's losing listening times, as people change their listening habits to migrate in streaming platforms. As of just August 8th, Odyssey was set to begin negotiations with financial creditors to restructure its debt, as large radio networks struggle with declining advertising revenue. So, this 750 cash would be a real boost. That's according to the Wall Street Journal. And then I want to quote David Field, the son of the founder of Intercom, who's now at the head of Odyssey, Philadelphia. Odyssey shared with the SEC that current macroeconomic conditions have created and continue to create significant uncertainty in operations, significant uncertainty in operations, including rising inflation in interest rates, significant volatility in financial markets, decreases in advertising revenue, and increased competition for advertising expenditures, which have had, and are expected to continue to have, a material adverse effect on the company's forecasted revenue. And so, I'm having difficulty understanding how an unsolicited proposal comes to the city on the weekend of the largest-running annual oceanfront event, that's already bringing 200,000 to 250,000 visitors here. 15 million in economic impact. Rates for hotels are already 30 to 40%, higher. I'm not sure the public wants that type of enhancement. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, and Chris, I really, you know, you know, respect your, your, your research on this, but, but once again, I think Odyssey was a proven commodity, where they, we did put on a successful, you know, event with the East Coast Surfing Championship. And that, if I recall, right next to that event was volleyball competition. Would perhaps a simple solution be to move it ahead a week? Is that a possibility?
We'll be happy to bring whatever your direction is back to the promoter. That's, absolutely, I'll be happy to bring it back to the event promoter, and see if that's something that, that they could work with, or if there's an alternative date that they'd like to suggest.
Would, would the council be open to a potential of, as the vice mayor suggested, you know, perhaps, you know, given the time thing, you know, to have a special meeting on or about the time of our retreat, you know, so this way, we could get the information, and perhaps go to a win-win. Mr. Belucci?
Mayor, I just wonder if it would be possible to, so that the promoter could make the necessary preparations that we authorize with the contingency, that once staff is able to work with the promoter to bring forward a plan, that barring the need to come back, so I think these matters can be easily resolved. And just as you said, Mayor, there's multiple things happening on, on the resort and at the beach at any given time. And I respect my, my friend's analysis about, you know, how much can, can they handle, or what's the, what's the interest in the public, but that's, that's subjective. There are people who would love to attend a performance, and there are people who would love to attend the art show at the same time, or one, or the other. And I think, you know, we certainly have the capability to, to do many things, and to be many things to many people. And I think that's been articulated previously tonight. So, I just wonder, Mayor, instead of coming back and sort of relitigating all this, we allow the, the staff the opportunity to, to resolve these matters. And as Mr. Berlin pointed out, we think that they can be resolved appropriately. And then, outside of major crisis, we, you know, they'll, they'll present that what that resolution, resolution looks like. And if then, at that point, we need to call a special session, in order to cancel it, or something like that, we'd have that opportunity. That's my take.
Okay, where's Mayor?
Let me ask Nancy another question. So, the pier's on 15th Street. You said 17th Street. Are you talking about this on the north side of the pier, or the south side of the pier?
The conversation today was south of the pier, but if you give me a moment to go back and work with our staff to, to get you the footprint, that makes sense.
If we can make this contingent on being on the north side of the pier, I can support this tonight. I was planning on voting for this, because, and I, and I told, and I met with these condos folks this week, this weekend, and I really got an earful.
Sure.
And I said, well, we've got one coming, but don't worry, it's going to be down at 31st Street. And then, all of a sudden, it's moved. So, if we can, if we can move this on the north side of the pier, I'm happy to support it.
Did you make that motion?
I will definitely bring this back to staff.
Well, we've got a motion on the table.
I'll definitely bring this back to staff, and bring it back to our team to have the conversation.
Well, how about if we make that tonight, and y'all try to work it out?
Okay, Sabrina?
Would you amend your?
Excuse me, one second, Sabrina.
Okay.
Would the maker of the motion, amend the motion to have it north of?
To add that in, because right now, I do not believe it's in the motion, or in the ordinance to put the location.
No, but you could put the location, amend your motion to say north of the pier.
Yes.
And then, second?
Second. Michael?
Yes.
Okay, Sabrina?
You know, I have a comment. And I do, you know, just want to say, in terms of the timing of this, and the fast-tracking of this particular event, I actually thought we'd, you know, have more time to discuss and ask questions, because usually, even with something in the water, it takes a while. It takes a while to plan. And I remember sitting around the table, and there were lots of questions. And, you know, it was planned out. So, to see it on the agenda the following week, I was a little concerned about that. And it is, it's nothing against Odyssey, it's nothing against, you know, enhancement of the beach, nothing like that. It's, again, process. Perhaps we need a discussion on protocol and process on these types of events, too. I'm just saying, from what I see. But the other thing I noticed, too, it's a quick Google search, I found the same information out that my colleague, council member Taylor, did. That gives me pause. And I'm, I'm happy to vote tonight, but when I, when I do vote, it's going to take in consideration the economic status of this company, the timing, certainly $750,000 in investing that, you want to get the biggest bang for your $750,000 buck. I would think there would be more planning, more time, perhaps next year, perhaps later. That's just me looking at the facts, observing, researching.
Yes, this is absolutely the will of council, so let us know.
Those are just my thoughts, and if I were to vote tonight, wouldn't be in support of it for those reasons.
Now, Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to chime in quickly, and, and just, I guess, and I know, I know folks have talked about it, but we have to remember that this isn't just $750,000 cash expenditure. This is a, it is an in-kind arrangement where we're deriving benefit from. And I remember, I don't remember which presentation it was, but it was maybe a city council retreat before, before I got into office. But I remember, you know, hearing John Martin talk about the importance of brand ID outside of our city, and how, you know, how important it is for people to, A, form an opinion about us, but, but, but if they're, they're not familiar with us, then how can they form an opinion about us, and enough to want a visitor or return? So, I, I, I'm supportive of this measure. I'm supportive of the, the proposed modifications to north of 17th Street. And if there's, if there's a way to find a different weekend that doesn't negatively impact the art show, but, but I do believe that, you know, we do, we do need more people to be familiar with us in order to come visit us and have an opinion about us to come back.
Yeah, and I appreciate the conversation. You know, if I can hearken back to a time a little while ago, when I first got elected mayor in 2018, I got sworn in, I believe, on November 22nd, and one of the first things the council had to confront was, do we go forward with something in the water? And some of the arguments I heard about that, or things that I heard today, were doing too quick. Because if I recall, we were, we were talking about it in November, and we were talking about in April, you know, filling in the gap in College Beach Weekend, which, with the magnitude of that show, which I believe had 38,000 people, it came together. And it's one thing I am confident about in Virginia Beach, that we have a reputation of being able to handle large crowds, and we have the capacity to do it safely, effectively, and I think, and have multiple events over and over. So, you know, with this, you know, I would be definitely in favor of the conditional, you know, thing, to see if we can work it out, and get that reputation of being a city of yes, and have the other types of venues that attract so, so many other diverse people to our beach. So, in this case, if it's okay, can we open up the vote?
Well, I just wanted to say, I concur also with the conditions, so that we really know, because we have to give respect to the art. And as the liaison over for advertising, I've seen what they would be bringing to Odyssey.
Yes.
Just did not know the conflict.
Does Mr. Remick need to restate?
Excuse me. I move for approval of the ordinance with an amendment of the location north of 17th Street.
No, no, the 15th Street pier.
Excuse me. I move for approval of the ordinance with the amendment of a location south of?
North. North.
We're having one of those nights, aren't we?
North of 15th Street. North of 15th Street.
Pier, right.
And the second was a thing. Okay, vote is open.
I'm sorry, by a vote of seven to four, you have approved the ordinance as amended.
Okay, thank you, and thank you all for that very deliberative and courteous conversation. Okay, and then the final planning item is number seven, Ascensions Group's LLC, George and Joan Giorgio, for a conditional use permit for short-term rental at 402 22nd Street.
We have one speaker, Christopher Sproul.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
How you doing?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good.
Good evening, City Council. I'm here to speak on behalf of Ascensions Group, and the, the short-term rental permit that we put in, and was approved by the Planning Commission. Excuse me, I'm a little under the weather, so apologize for, for my voice.
Been there, done that.
Yeah, it's not been a fun week. So, a little bit about the company. We're a veteran-owned and operated company. We founded ourselves four years ago. There's five of us now, working for the business. We've been in the Hampton Roads, Virginia Beach area, for almost 10 years now. We have come to be integrated in the community. We love the community. We run and operate, at this point, five successful short-term rentals. We've had, I think, close to 550 stays now in Virginia Beach, Sandbridge in the area. We've, to date, never had one complaint from a neighbor, from, from anybody at all. We're very diligent in our selection process for our guests. We provide a boost, I think, to the local community during those 550 stays that we've had, that we've not had one single complaint. We recommend restaurants all over the oceanfront, that people that come to Virginia Beach would never get to visit and see, and walk around the vibe district, and we provide a unique experience that they wouldn't get at a hotel. So, I hope it's for these reasons that you'll consider us and approve our short-term rental permits. And pending any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So, thank you for speaking, coming up and speaking. So, your, the ownership is local, or?
Yep, the ownership is local. I live in Croatan. My business partner lives on 12th Street, so we're all here local still. All, all the employees are.
And do you have other short-term rentals?
We do, yeah. I have another one on 22nd Street. We have one in Sandbridge, so we have a couple scattered around the, the oceanfront area, which we see, we've never had any issues with our, with our rentals.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Any other speakers?
I'm sorry, that's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we have a motion.
Second.
Thank you. So, the motion is to approve of the application. Earlier today, and I hope Councilwoman Hammond, you agree with the move to approve the application. So, earlier today, I spoke about the possibility of denying this application. I will say this. Short-term rentals are, have been an issue in the north end of Virginia Beach, and in the Old Beach Resort. We have approved a lot of short-term rentals in the Old Beach Resort. I approve of short-term rentals in the Atlantic Avenue and Pacific Avenue locations. However, in the Old Beach Resort of streets from 17th to 24th Street, we have really aggregated a lot of short-term rentals. After tonight, I will be denying, or moving to deny, applications in the Old Beach Resort area off of Atlantic and Pacific Avenues. I've heard the story tonight. I think this is a good local group. I'm not here to, to question that, but I think we really have to look at the number of short-term rentals in the Old Beach Resort area. And I've asked staff And I've asked staff if we could cap this number, and we're looking into that, but it's just, at some point, it's going to be overkill for short-term rentals in the Old Beach, and so, yes, I do move to approve the application.
Okay, any other comment? Okay, let's open the vote.
Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Wooten, may I have your vote? Councilmember Wooten, thank you. By a vote of 11 to zero, you have approved the application.
Okay, thank you. I think we're ready for appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Active Transportation Advisory Committee, we're going to nominate Allison Alred. The Bayfront Advisory Committee, Lexi Bradshaw and Molly Jones. We're going to be doing beaches and waterways tonight. We have eight fine citizens to appoint. Joseph Byrne, Mark Bowenstein, Patrick Clark, Michael Agresty, Steve Gibson, Lance Lescher, Daniel Murphy, and Robert Goodman. The Chesapeake Bay Alcohol Safety Alcohol Action Program, Chief Paul Newtigate. The Clean Community Commission, Bryse Dildy. The Development Authority, Linda Bright and David Weiner. The Health Services Advisory Board, Iva Robinett. The Housing Advisory Board, Lawrence Cleaver, Faye Silverman, and Jessica Guglielmo. The Independent Citizens Review Board, Joe Jackson and Kelvin White. The Minority Business Council, Carla Gregory, Cavell Malino, Herman Valentine. The Open Space Advisory Committee, Diana McDowell and Chuck Rigney.
Vice Mayor, Mr. Chuck is for the ocean and land use.
Open Space Advisory Committee. Oh, yep. The ocean and land use is Chuck Rigney, excuse me. Thank you, Madam Clark. Parks and Rec Commission, Kathy Moran. The Planning Commission, Susan Hippen. The Virginia Beach Cannabis Advisory Task Force, Captain Jeffrey Wilkerson. The Wetlands Board, reappoint Jim Vale. And that's it for tonight.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, and I did not hear you for the reappointment for the Community Services Board. On page four.
Reappoint Sidney Curtis.
Thank you.
It was a long, convoluted list tonight.
Okay. Okay, it's in. Ready for the vote?
The vote is open. By a vote of 11 to zero, you have appointed those as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, any old business, new business. Thank you all. Long day. We are adjourned.